Good evening, members of council as well as citizens of Williamsburg County and our guests that are here in council chambers. Obviously, we have a sound check that has been approved for our various social media outlets. Also, citizens, if need be, you are also encouraged to call in at 877-309-2073. The access code to log into the conference call is 590-380-589. We do have a maximum amount of people in here of 25 people in chambers. Because we are open to the public, we will not be taking any public comments via social media or teleconferences. We are now open for public hearing to hear the following ordinances. Our 2020-2021-6, that ordinance is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and one or more companies collectively identified for the time being as Project Citadel, each acting for itself, one or more affiliates and/or project sponsors collectively the company pursuant to which the county show covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment and our expansion of a certain facility in the county by the company and to other matters related. The other ordinance is ordinance number 2021-17. It is an ordinance authorizing the sale of four parcels, TM numbers 11024145, 11024146, 1124-147, and 1124-148, owned by Williamsburg County, located at the corner of school in Brook Street in King Street, South Carolina, in accordance with the terms and conditions of this ordinance. Also to hear ordinance number 2021-19, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a quitclaim deed for an undivided one-half interest in 4.2 acres located at Jane Harvin Road Lane, South Carolina, bearing tax map numbers 45211-021 to Terry Butler and/or Acorn Ridge Farm LLC in consideration of the sum of $5,000 and release from any or any and all claims arising out of the title to the subject property, the deed to be executed by the supervisor and attested by the clerk of council. At this time, anyone that is in favor of it or support these ordinances may have one to three minutes to speak in reference to it, or those who are in opossumment for these, those opposers for this public hearing or these ordinance will also have one to three minutes to speak. We also have in house our economic, our executive director of economic development if there is any questions that need to be asked. Also, the explanation of each of these ordinance have been included in members of councils packet for their review in previous readings of ordinances. If you have any questions, please do the following: come to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name and the district that you represent. At this time, do we have anyone that would like to come to the podium for public hearing?
Madam Supervisor, members of council, good evening. I just want to talk about one of the edits that was done to the first draft of the ordinance for ordinance number 2021-16. Originally, the first draft stated that the company or Project Citadel would be a $4 million capital investment, 100 jobs. After speaking and consulting with private special counsel on this, the fee-in-lie agreement, if there are more than one companies or two or more companies involved in a fee-in-lie agreement, at least $5 million has to be in capital, the capital investment has to be at least $5 million. So that, and you see in your packet, the first draft had $4 million, 100 jobs. Now we'll say 500, $5 millions and 100 jobs in the new ordinance. So it will reflect what the statute mandates for fee-in-lie agreements.
Any questions of members of council? Any questions by the general public in reference to any of the ordinance that have been mentioned during this public hearing? Hearing none. This public hearing going once, going twice, the public hearing is now closed. We are going to go ahead and call the order, the regularly scheduled council meeting that is scheduled for October 19, 2021. The invocation will be handled by Councilman Floyd.
Let us pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we bow before you this day as your humble servant, thanking you for all the blessings that you've given us, Lord. We thank you for this wonderful county you allow us to live in. We thank you for the opportunity to represent the good citizens of this county. And now, Lord, as we begin this meeting, we ask that all actions we do be with pure hearts and minds and be pleasing in your sight. We ask all of these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Floyd. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes from the public hearing and the regularly scheduled council meeting that was held October 4, 2021. All members of council should have had an opportunity to read, to look at the minutes. What is the pleasure of council?
Motion for approval.
It's been properly motioned. Second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. The next order of business is our ordinances, in which we just had the public hearing on, so I will not be reading them all out again. So I would just refer to them as third reading and final approval of ordinance number 2021-16. We need a motion for third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. The next ordinance is for third reading and final approval of ordinance number 2021-17. We need a motion for approval. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. This motion is also carried. Third reading of final and for final approval of ordinance number 2021-18. We need a motion for final approval.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. Motion is carried. We also have third reading and final reading of ordinance, and this was, I believe, mentioned in the last council meeting for public hearing, was an ordinance authorizing the execution... Hold on for a second, let me make sure I got all of them on here. Nope, this was also up for public hearing this time, and that was ordinance number 2021-19. We need a motion for third and final approval.
So moved. Third reading.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. We have, the next order is for second reading of ordinance 2021-20. I am going to postpone that simply because we may have to do another amendment due to the reassessment of taxes. So we hold for that and postpone that until the next reading. The next order of business is the committee report, and Councilman Wood, Woods, who is the chair of the bid committee, can go ahead and...
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wright. The bid committee, we met on, I think it was September...
Hang on.
We met on September the 30th, and the purpose for this meeting was to receive or seal the bids for third-party audit, thing firm, to do the audit for Williamsburg County. We only had two bidders. One was Malden and Jenkins, CPE and advisors, and the other one was Love Bailey and Associates. And we wanted to take some, we would have presented this to the last council meeting, but we wanted to have time to look at their references and be as fiscally responsible as we possibly could. We didn't want to get a firm that was going to give us a lot of things that we didn't need and inflate our prices because we live in a county like this, and we don't have a lot of cash just to flow out there. So after reviewing the, the, um, the, look at the references, and we called and thoroughly vetted them, both companies, and one of them, the Malden and Jenkins, Malden and Jenkins, CPE, they submitted a bid of between $47,000 to $52,000. And Love Bailey and Associates submitted a bid of $34,750. And based upon our assessment, we determined that either of these company was reputable, and they could have done what we needed them to do as far as auditing for the county. So due to the fact that Love Bailey and Associates were the lowest bidder at $34,750, we decided to recommend Love Bailey and Associates to the full council for approval. And I do offer that in the form of a motion coming from the bid committee.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion for selection of the auditing company, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. Thank you, Councilman Woods. The next order of business is we do have an appearance. I ask that everyone please keep their appearances down to three minutes max. We have Ms. Gwendolyn Fleming, who's with the Sickle Cell Anemia Disease Association of Williamsburg County, and other members of that association are present. You may come to the podium.
Good evening.
I'm, we were asked to come in to, excuse me, to give an update on the Sickle Cell Anemia Disease Society of Williamsburg County. And first of all, I want to say that our main focus is awareness. We try to bring awareness to the disease of sickle cell anemia. And very quickly, some of the main things that we have done and are doing, the annual sickle cell walk, which is always held the last Saturday of September, last Saturday in September, and it's generally held at the Kennedy Center in Greeleyville. This year, we moved it from there just to do something in memory of our warrior Vernell Parsons Graham, who had died within the last year, and we will be moving back to the Kennedy Center. We were happy to see our supervisor, Mayor of Greeleyville, Jesse Parker, the CEO of the hospital, Ms. Abernathy, and we had, the speaker, the main speaker was Representative Mia McLeod, who is running for governor of South Carolina, and she herself is a sickler. Then on Wednesdays, every Wednesday during the month of September, we have, well, we started out calling it prayer in the park, because we always did it at Monsieur Park in Greeleyville. But the last two years, due to COVID, we had to do it by phone, so midday prayer. And we have had some awesome motivational speakers, and we ask that you join us when you can. So much so that people have been asking that we continue it during the year. So we're thinking about one Wednesday per month, but we'll, you'll see more about that. We also have the Vernell Parsons Graham Scholarship. It's open to the three high schools of Williamsburg County, awarded to one college-bound senior per high school. And it's a $500 scholarship. You have to have the disease, not the trait. The child has to have the disease. And it's a $500 one-time scholarship. But we also continue to give those students something, do something for them throughout the year. We also have a SCAS poster child. He or she represents SCAS at churches, within the schools, civic meetings, things of that nature. We also met in 2016, we met the South Carolina General Assembly with their Sickle Cell Disease Study Committee, and we were fortunate enough to get some of our members to speak before that committee. Next, we go into the schools here in Williamsburg County, work closely with the superintendent, and whether we go in through parenting, guidance, nursing, where we get into the schools and we talk to the students, sometimes we spend the entire day, but that's generally elementary and middle school students we're speaking to there. And with those students, we generally give them, at the beginning of the school year, maybe a $25 gift card, you know, something like that. And the last, okay, but very last thing.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, the Sickle Cell Infusion Center, at, in 2017, August of 2017, we met with county and state representatives from Williamsburg County, hospital representatives, DHEC, and Dr. Julie Cantor-Washell, who is a hematologist and researcher from the University of, Medical University of South Carolina in Charleston. And we're lobbying for an infusion center in the new hospital that's being built, because it really would be an advantage for sicklers, because it, for example, just very quickly, pain management, decreased hospitalizations, and travel from, to Charleston or Columbia, something like that, is almost too much on a sickler for that. And we were in the process of doing a camp for youth and teens, but because of COVID, we had to call that off. And I just want to say the last thing to Williamsburg County, to Dr. Wright, council, Williamsburg County, thank you so much for all that you do to help us.
Thank you. We'd also like to take this opportunity for the group that is from that organization to please stand up and be acknowledged. Thank you guys for all your work. All right. Also, next, next item on the agenda is the supervisor's report. In your chairs, you have found, you should have found redistricting maps. Thank you to my assessor's office for helping get those maps. It is so important that you all review the information and be able to, to understand the information. I believe the two that will be helping lead this charge will be Councilmember Floyd and Vice Chair Woods, obviously, because they have the most time in service at this point. So they will be helping lead this charge so that we can make sure that everything is handled properly. Hope I didn't overstep to Floyd. He's like, you didn't run that part by me. But hopefully, again, if there's something that you don't understand, I know that Councilman Floyd has been working and getting as much information as he could, but it is so important that you all look at these maps and understand them, because this is our time. You will be stuck with these redistricting zones for the next 10 years. So just FYI on that. Also, I'm asking council members, we had sent out a poll for our Williamsburg County employees to determine the holidays that they would like to take. Council has in the past approved two days for the December holiday, Christmas holiday, and that is pretty much 77% of them chose that we be off or be allowed, or council to consider being off December 24th and December 27th. And they have also asked that because of some of the shortfalls we've had in terms of being able to give out even cost of living increases, that council consider an additional day off. We did this last year, or year before last, year before last, we did it. And we would like for you all to consider that again. You do not have to make a decision today, but by next council meeting, November, which is in our November meeting, we would like a decision to be made as to, number one, approving those days and also providing an additional day. So the additional day would be on that Thursday, simply because usually towards the end of the week, people are more, are less likely to be doing business other than the first part of the week. So they are requesting to have off that Thursday, Friday, and Monday. Also, just heads up, daylight savings time is coming upon us, and what usually happens, we have to change the recycling center times. Now, we're going to try to do something a little different this time, because it has created such a problem with people not getting the information out or understanding why we're changing the times. We have to change the times because it creates a hazard to not only the employees working those sites, but also to the citizens of those sites, because those sites are not well-lit. So in order, to prevent any accidents from happening, that is why the recycling centers close early. So daylight savings time takes place November 7. And again, this will be, it will probably be before November 7, but we will give our citizens at least a two-week notice. So instead of them closing at the traditional time, it won't affect the Tuesday and Thursday times, but it will affect the Monday, Wednesday, and Friday times, simply because they stay open till 7:00 PM. So we will have to push that time back to probably, as we have in the past, till 5:30 PM. This is nothing new. This is simply a safety precaution for our citizens and our employees that are working the sites. At this time, we have not come up with a lighting, an ability to light or to have additional lighting at the sites, and nor could we really afford at this point 20 different facilities to be lit up. So we are looking at some other options. So please stay tuned for that information. I just wanted to get that word to you all, so you can start talking to your constituents in those areas and letting them know the reasons we will be sending out notifications that they will have to be closed due to daylight savings time. And let's see, the last order of business is you all, last meeting, I discussed with you the recycling center challenge. I've asked for input on those recycling centers. Hopefully, you all had the opportunity to go see them, but if you did not, thanks to the work of our sheriff's office, Investigator Montieth and Investigator Ballard, for helping us get the video footage and flying the drones to get the videos that you will see coming up. Also, I want to send a special thank you to the judges, which was Chief Swinton, Chief Cumby, Sheriff Gardner, and Jesse Parker were our judges for the event. It was a two-week event, and we were able to get a lot of, get the recycling centers cleaned up if you hadn't gone on to see them. We do have video of what they look like just after we finished them. I don't know what they look like now, but we know that they, they look, they've gone through a transition. Also, the winners of the recycling center site contest was the Goon Squad, for which myself and Jerry Parker were the captains of it. So I will tell you later on which recycling centers we actually had. So without further ado, please roll that beautiful bean footage. I T. If you will, the lights for me. All right, if you will, the lights for me.